Assistant Director Job?
Yeah.
It was a January eighth, um, I bet you that's what I came from, January eighth.
Yeah, I'm trying to justify.
Hear from this. Hear from the buffer. Little dial-up sound.
Yup. That's what it is.
Yep.
The one before Chris, Laura, she, she was doing a long time, quite a while.
Yeah.
And then she wore a lot. She, she, she went to the mansion with Metin, she was divorced, she met an old boy. They're not moving, moving to Washington, they joined.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
But what do I remember that change?
Uh-huh. Something like that.
Yeah, it was, it was so.
Can everybody keep joining the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the roll.
Alderman Baccador.
Here.
Thompson.
He's in absence.
Patack.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Laveri.
Present.
Jepson.
Present.
Herndon.
She's in absence.
Thank you.
Remotely, I moved.
He'll be here once.
I'm here.
Yeah, I'll make the motion if you're ready. I'll move that Alderman Herndon.
Well, we gotta finish the roll first.
Didn't you finish the roll?
Yup.
Yep, we're.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I moved that Alderman Herndon be allowed to attend the meeting remotely due to his illness.
Second. Motion Shabam and Laveri, Shabam and Reynolds to allow Alderman Boo Herndon to join us via the phone. Take the roll, please.
Yes, Alderman Baccador.
Aye.
Patack.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Actually, she's present. That was attendance.
That was just voting.
On a meeting, okay.
Motion.
Hello, hey, Alderman Herndon, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
All right, you are in the council chambers. We're gonna take the roll again.
Okay, Alderman Baccador.
Here.
Patack.
Here.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri. Laveri.
Present.
Jepson.
Present.
Herndon. Crane.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I can, I'd like to remind everyone, obviously you can see we have some cameras in the room, one behind the mayor, two on the sides of the room to get the council. Previously, the council has voted to begin live streaming, so we did have the cameras installed. Unfortunately, we tended to start live streaming today, we were unable to, uh, because your spot was here today trying to get it sorted out. There's issues right now with our connection to YouTube Live, they're working with support, they thought there'd be a fix by tonight, but obviously not enough time to attempt to wait for that to happen. So, we are set up right now to record, and assuming that goes well, we will upload this to YouTube hopefully later this week. By the next council meeting, assuming that it's fixed, we should be able to live stream on YouTube at that time.
Thanks, Brian, I know you've been working on that, we appreciate it. Let's get to our point in our, on our, uh, meeting where we opened, uh, for public comments. I guess just to kind of reiterate what, uh, was mentioned last week by myself is, again, this is a time for you to speak and give your thoughts, concerns, ask some questions. As far as my, on my behalf, any questions for me, I'm gonna ask you to please get ahold of me after hours, call my phone, give me an email, whatever you wanna do, come make an appointment, we can talk about it. Again, I don't wanna take away from your five minutes. Again, thank you guys for public comment, as you come up, please make sure you are identifying who you are. Again, just if you know, even if you think you know, we know who you are, just for the record, we need to have that on the, on our audio recording. I would like to start myself with a public comment, if I could. All cell residents received basically information flyer, postcard-type correspondence. Everybody should have kind of received one. And basically, this is something that we put out through the EPA. It's an annual thing that goes out. That's my particular one. You notice when you get it, if you didn't receive it already at your home, it'll so, it'll tell you where to log into, and then it'll give you your ID number, which is the bottom left-hand corner. And that's basically your password to get in. What this is looking for is a situation, if somebody has like a sprinkler system at home, any kind of back valve, check valve situation, uh, some people had that with, for sure, restaurants, commercial property. It won't really probably pertain to many of us in our own residential areas, but this is just to make sure that we're in compliance with what we need to be doing, uh, for this company to do that. So, um, again, this is something that's through the EPA, it's nothing new, we've received this before. Kevin, anything to add on that?
Uh, yeah, I talked to ladies from, uh, the backflow today. And also, for residents, it's mainly if you have a sprinkler system, fire protection, if you have a sprinkler system, or a, uh, they said like a jacuzzi tub, that would be hooked up to go with your city water. Also, you need to check about, or maybe you want to check per the EPA Y. If you ha, if you have one of these setups, you have to have checked about.
Leaving again some questions on that, so just to make sure everybody kind of understands what that's about. So, everybody up here, do you guys get one of those already?
Yeah, it took about five minutes.
Yeah, I'll say five minutes, five minutes or less to do.
Was there a survey that asked about, like, your lead lines?
No.
No. No lead line question.
It was just, uh, the one I did was just backflow.
Okay.
And one thing I was confused about, I thought maybe it'd have something about swimming pools on there, but they must not want that in their survey.
It did.
They didn't say something about like jacuzzi tubs.
I, I saw jacuzzi, but, 'cause generally if you're filling a tank, or, you know, like you said, irrigation as well, but like a tank, it can siphon out if something ever happened, and that's why you use a backflow preventer. Anybody that uses, uh, bulk water in LaSalle, they're always hooked up to a backflow preventer off the hydrant as well.
It used to be too, some that sprayed herbicides if the record.
I will correct myself, this, we had to report this to the EPA. We use a third party to do this. We use, we hired them, contracted them out to do this for us. My fault, it wasn't from EPA.
When we signed in, when we logged in, it didn't say nothing about EPA, you know, like it did on their fancy fly.
Well, this should be the same flyer everybody got.
Very, very confusing.
Okay, that's why we're trying to explain this now, tonight. All right? Thank you, any other comments, thoughts, please come up to the microphone.
Your Honor, before they start, we had a little bit last week where they went six, you know, seven minutes. We all voted for five minutes. So, if we start six minutes, seven minutes, be ten minutes. If it's five minutes, or if you wanna change it to six, let's change it. But if it's five, when the five comes, I think they should stop. Because we all voted on it, every one of us voted on the five.
Right, and I think Alderman, there was, one of the Aldermen made a motion to, to extend that period of time, and I think then the council, the council, uh, has that opportunity to, to vote yes or no at that time.
But I mean, well, well then, why do we have that?
The council?
Why do we have the five-minute rule if we're not gonna, if we're gonna keep changing it, it might?
Uh, no.
I think, I think, the five-minute rule is the rule, but again, the council has that opportunity to, to ask for more time, and if the, if the majority of the council votes to give that time, then we're gonna do it. But I understand what you're saying, but I think if somebody's midstream and the council as a whole feels that that's something more time should be awarded, it's up to you guys to decide that. I mean, if you wanna say no, Alderman, you can say no, you know? But I think that's something we, we all have to decide as a group, that the Aldermen, um, can make that decision to, to ask for extended time. Doesn't mean it's binding, but it's up to the vote of the, you know, the council.
It's fair, he's asking that question while Bob Thompson.
But if that's your point, Jim, if that's your point, you know, I'm.
No, I mean, so, if you wanna give them six minutes, let's change it to six minutes.
Well, they don't need six minutes, everything.
It was just extended.
There were a few, there were a few comments and, uh, we had time.
Six minutes, and you bore the hell out of it, so we don't have.
Jamie, we're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna set the standard right now, we're not gonna have people just making cat calls from the audience when other people are talking. And it, that will still, tell them the same thing if they do that when you're talking.
This is obviously directed at one person, like it always is.
No, there was two of yous last night.
Anyway, we're gonna move forward.
I requested a one-minute, sir, and it was about the safety of the people, and the law.
So did Snyder, so that was two of yous.
Okay.
And you keep violating them, sir.
Dawn, did you wanna come up?
Okay.
You keep ignoring, smile at him, because you got me fired up, right? Can you be quiet, please? Smile, you too, buddy, keep smiling.
You know what, I'm, I, I'm gonna ask you to leave, I can't, you're, you're disrupting everything, you're.
I'm disrupting nothing.
No, I'm not.
You're, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna.
Do we have, uh?
Leave right now.
I'm not leaving.
Okay, if you're not leaving, I'm gonna place you under arrest.
Dawn?
You placed me under arrest?
Let's go, you're under arrest, let's go. Let's go. Fight me?
Dude, I am not fighting, I'm leaving.
It's a long time.
Let me stand up, you motherfucker.
Whoa!
Let me stand up, I'm trying to get up.
Hope that recorded.
Disrupting everything.
And don't let them back in, that'd be the best thing. Keep them out for good.
Donna, you ready?
One of the things I wanted to ask about is, uh, the air monitor at Rotary, sorry, Joe.
Yes.
Uh, have you checked it out recently?
Uh, I checked today, and I checked yesterday, it seems to be operating properly.
For the most part, but January thirty, from 5:00 PM to January thirty-first at 1:00 AM, there was zero readings out at Rotary. Now, I understand if it's an hour or something, you know, program, we already talked about that, but being that it's plugged in, I don't know why it would be off for so many hours like that in the middle of the night. So, I respectfully asking if you could maybe look into that, see what's going on.
I believe there's a phone number to call on the app.
Yeah, I figure, Kevin, if we can get, I know Patrick helped us set up, maybe we'll get Patrick and you and I, um, touch the support, and see if we can dial it, exactly what might be up.
Is, is that the only one?
Um, there is another one, it was only for an hour though, and I figured.
I, I meant, I meant is that, is that the only monitor that, that's showing malfunction so far?
You know, you probably look at it more than I do, um, does, does the li, does the library one ever go offline for a period of time like that?
That's kind of what I was wondering.
I think I've seen the library one go off maybe once for an hour.
Okay.
In the last three months, when I really started kind of watching it more. Maybe as far back as October, but not like.
Rotary's the one that.
Yeah, it keeps acting up.
Okay, Brent, if I can.
Do we actually have a power source there, or is it still a battery?
It's, it's, it's plugged in now.
It's plugged in now, okay.
Yeah, Brent, if I can help out any way.
Yeah, we'll keep you CC'd in the dial-in.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
Also, I know when we first got this monitor, um, you were told that we would actually kind of give an information about the app, like how it works. So, I do feel like I am missing out on more information from that app, that I don't fully understand. So, I don't know if we could sometime very soon have a tutorial of how to use that properly, get the information from it, and kind of the purpose of having this. So, I don't know if that's something you guys can put on the list for next time, or.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm kinda, like, like, yeah, I get it.
Do you want it like, um, something we should put out, like, you know, like a water bills, like a, maybe a, a step-by-step thing, or? I mean, you're welcome to come down anytime, and these guys can walk you through it, right?
Well, I think it would be beneficial, because I'm not feeling one of those, that more people in the community, so I think it needs to be something, either maybe the water bill, or the Facebook page of City LaSalle, or the website of City LaSalle, kind of a step-by-step.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if I can find like some kind of, uh, online tutorial, maybe, so I can watch it, maybe get more informed, uh.
Yeah, there's so, so much more that I'm, I'm not getting out of it that I, the information's there, I'm just not sure how to.
Sure.
Utilize it, so, um.
What I kind of need about it, Donna, how mu, how much you looked into it, maybe this is something, but you can look, like, check out other cities, and where there is, is, and it was kind of weird to see, like, we looked up Beijing, it was like 120, which is really crazy. Obviously, we're not worried about Beijing. Coal City, yeah, some of those, I think Madison was a little bit higher, Madison, Wisconsin, so, um, yeah. But I thought that was pretty neat, because that was something I learned on it.
Um, I am curious about the picture on the back of the water survey. If somebody just randomly chose that, or if that was kind of a passive-aggressive way to say, oh, our water's fine, look, a baby's actually drinking it from the tap.
Again, Dawn, I know everybody wants to think there's some conspiracy to it, but we had nothing, I had nothing to do with that picture.
That's why I'm asking, I'm not.
And I, and I want to say, appreciate you asking us tonight on it, and, and not just assuming that was the case. But again, I do stand by my statement that the water is safe to drink, shower in and cook with. But that had nothing to do, again, we didn't get to pick that from that group to send that out for us, as far as the picture.
Well, as far as you saying about the water and everything, you know, I understand that not everybody's home is being negatively affected by the quality of water, um, which is good, obviously, the less people that are affected, the better, but.
My, mine is discolored as well. I will say that.
But there's more than just discolored, and it's been happening longer than just the last few months. So, my thing is, is by you saying that, and then you kind of disregard the people who have photos, have had their waters tested by professionals, and you completely disregard them. It's very offensive.
No, it's not meant to be offensive, like I said, that we, the water treatment plant tests it every day. So, I don't know if maybe a situation where some of your piping, the individual home piping has an issue, I think we reached out.
We just spent $600 on a.
I think, I think we personally reached out to you, if you wanted to get ahold of Test, to have them test your water, is that true?
What's that?
We say we're at five minutes here, no one gets a back four.
Real quick, though, I think we'll be glad to have Test come out and check your water for you, if you feel comfortable with that. I believe, uh, John Duncan gave you that information.
Now that we just bought the $600 home water filtration.
Well, I think going forward is what you want to see, right? If it's, if it's your, if it was your system, or if it was.
It'd be nice to have that offer before we spend that money.
Well, I think John Duncan did offer you the waste, or the, um, Test number, to get ahold of that person from Test, because we followed up on them to see if you could ever call them.
I didn't understand what they could do for me.
Oh, okay. Anybody else tonight like to address the council?
Eric Dias for Oregon, um, I have a question. So, you're claiming the water is safe to drink, that's per EPA standards, correct?
Yeah, my, my statement hasn't changed, Eric, in the last two months about it. I just reiterated it five minutes ago.
In the January Consumer Report Magazine, and all about the country's water. So, one of the biggest things, you know if you're testing for the PFA S's, which are per and polyfluoro substances. These are forever chemicals. So, they're vicious consumer products, persist both in the environment and in our bodies. For those that have drank the water, have causing cancer and immune problems. So, out of 117, um, places they tested the water, out of 120, 117 of them had samples that are above the grade that they should be, according to the Consumer Science, um, Employee. The ability for the EPA to regulate these contaminants lags far behind from what they should be. So, my question to you is, are we looking to just meet an EPA goal? Are you looking to get the best you can to help the safety of the city?
Well, the only measurement that we go by that's kind of directs the, probably the highest concern that we have as far as state is the EPA. And I guess, growing up for 53 years, I've always told the EPA is kind of the standard setter. So, yes, that's what we're going at right now.
So, you're just gonna meet barely their standards?
I think we try to do everything we can to do, at least meet them, but we try to do what we can to, to do the best we can on all, on all Tests.
Right. I'll just, because like it says here, they're way behind, and it's obviously from the 1974 Act, Refree Water, um, one of the biggest issues is money, obviously, that the EPA's dealing with. All over the country, there's several issues going on in multiple states, that they don't have money to fix. And I'm sure that's gonna be a part of everywhere. So, somehow, hopefully, EPA can get their stuff together here, and start to get those limits to where we want to be, and find some way to, you know, help everybody out and cure this from being what it is.
Well, one thing that, obviously, we send our, our test results into EPA, right? So, I would hope that they saw something that was, well, I know, if they saw something that was out of line, obviously, they would expect us to, you know? I don't know about the stringent, is those tests, you're saying that maybe they're, I don't know if they're not testing for those? If that's just.
Probably not, I mean, like I said, they're saying, according to the Consumer, they're way behind.
The PFAS that you were talking about, we did test that, we're, I mean, they're level that the EPA.
Again, they're behind on, but I, you kind of hold what they have, I get it.
Yeah.
So, maybe there's something we can look into to try to get the EPA to step up the plank, to put lagging behind.
Yeah, that's nationwide.
Oh, it is, it is nationwide.
We're low, we're lower than.
It says it's just not here.
No, but areas that have chemical plants, like over by the Mississippi River with, uh, 3M, I think it's, I don't know what's with.
I think 3M got hammered hard.
Yeah, they did, they got hammered by it, their, their, the concentrations are high on both sides of the river. Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's just not here, but I was just looking to see if we were gonna try to go above standard, barely meet.
Those chemicals are basically what we call Teflon, but which is, you know, 20,000 different chemicals in, in there, so.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Anybody else want to speak tonight, public comment? All right, let's move on to approval of minutes.
Your Honor, make a motion, we approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held January 22nd, uh, 2024. Place on file, Alderman has a copy.
I'll second.
Motion Shabam and Reynolds, Shabam and Bassler, to approve the minutes, last city council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Against? Motion carried. Presentation.
Presentation from Mike McLean of Geneseal Communication, Inc., regarding fiber service for residents and related matters.
I move that Mike McLean of Geneseal Communication be allowed to address the council.
Second.
Second.
Motion Shabam and Laveri, Shabam and Jepson, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you guys doing?
We're doing well, how are you tonight?
Thanks for giving us a little time to present here. I am Mike McLean, CEO of Geneseal Communications, have Shane Winters, our chief operating officer, with me, and Kate Kroger, our vice president of marketing.
Welcome.
We're gonna tell you what we, what we do, and, and, uh, hopefully, we like to partner with the city here, so, flip the slide. Geneseal Communications started more than 120 years ago to provide phone service in Henry County, Illinois. In the past 10 years, we've been building fiber-to-the-premise networks in various parts of Quad Cities, as well as all the cities in Henry County. We're expanding eastward, and we have struck a deal, a right-of-way deal, went through to build fiber to the premise there. We have about 600 route miles of fiber, and about 60,000 strand miles of fiber. We branded our fiber, the premise network, as Fiber Be Fast, powered by Geneseal Communication. And the main difference in our network is two things. Our network is all glass, no copper, and we bury it. So, it buried, it cost us a, uh, multiple, what we've been hanging on hold for. But I'll, I'll tell you, you know, some of the benefits of that, we'll get. So, we're a 100% fiber network, which means your internet is only limited, it's a pulse of light. Literally, the speed of light, it's only limited by the electronics on both ends of the fiber. Look, we operate a network from Chicago to Omaha. We, I'm only showing you the east part of our network here, obviously, you're right between, uh, Quad Cities and Chicago, and we have fiber coming out of Chicago, goes through Quad Cities, so, all the way to Omaha. So, I'm now calling Shane to talk to you about the process we go through when we partner with the city.
Just want to thank you for your time tonight. Yeah, uh, when a city partners with Geneseal Communications, um, our engineering and our construction process is pretty, pretty simple and straightforward. We'll work with Brian's team to gather any GIS mapping, or any maps that, you know, are in Anvil or whatever, and, and get it into our system, so we know exactly where the facilities are, uh, within the city. Once we have those maps, we'll fully engineer the project. We'll assign a, at that time, we'll assign a project manager as well. Uh, he's basically our lead engineer, uh, that will work with Brian's team and, and get the, uh, project, uh, fully, fully developed and, and finished for, uh, Brian and his, his team's approval. Uh, we won't do anything, uh, passing, uh, until we have full approval from either engineering, Public Works. Uh, we work simultaneously with those departments, uh, to ensure that this, uh, you know, the main design is, is what everybody wants before we even start. Once the engineering of the project is complete and approved, uh, we'll move into permitting and staking. Uh, we'll work with the city, get the proper permits, uh, needed to access the right-aways and the utility easements. Once we have our, you know, once we have the project permitted, uh, we'll start our, our locates. We normally call those in a week before we start, uh, the project. Uh, and we'll continue that process all the way through to the completion of the project. Uh, once locates, uh, have been called in and everything, all the flags are up, we install the mainline conduit, that's the first step that we do. And once we, um, basically, we try to, we try to bore at a depth of 36 inches. If we ever, you know, run into a problem where we can't do that, we'll definitely get with the, uh, Public Works Department and Brian's team to figure out a, you know, equitable way to, to either go 24, or however, you know, whatever we need to do, uh, to make it happen, we'll, we'll do that. But, uh, we try to stay at 36 inches, that's been our, our mantra ever since I've started the company, and I've been there 20 years, so. So, once we're fully in the, the right-of-way, we have the handhole planted, as you can see on the right. It's very aesthetically pleasing, um, and any right-of-way that we disturb, we'll go ahead and reseed and restore that right-of-way to its, you know, former glory. Uh, but we try to keep those handholes as flush as to the ground as we can, so you can mow over them, and they look, uh, very nice, and they're not a nice ore for the community. Next slide, please. Moving on to step four, um, after the mainline conduit is, is fully in place, we'll go ahead and, uh, pull in or blow in the, uh, fiber optics through the ductwork. Basically, during step, uh, between steps two and four, we'll communicate directly, uh, with the city, with, and with residents, uh, on what's going on. Normally, when we, uh, get out there, and the contractors are, are blowing in the fiber, you know, they get a chance to talk with the residents, so, a lot of these pre-registered resi, residents will already know what's going on, because they'll, they're not shy, they come out and talk to the contractor. And, you know, and that gives us the opportunity to, you know, find where exactly they want the box placed on the property. It, it doesn't always go, uh, directly to the utilities, or where your, uh, normal phone box is at. Some residents want it on the other side of the house. And unlike, you know, other companies that go straight to the utilities, we work with the customer to get it to where they want. Even if we have, even if we have to go and do a bore shot underneath their driveway, we'll do it, so. Kind of got offbeat there. So, moving on to step five, we'll, we'll connect the homes and businesses to the network. Uh, once the mainline fiber construction is complete, we start connecting homes and businesses to our network. When somebody registers for service, drop conduit will be plowed to the home or businesses unless a bore is required. Uh, drop conduit is normally at a depth of 12 to 24 inches. So, like I, like I was saying, once the contractor's out there, and they get a chance to talk to the residents, then we bore that drop to the house, it'll be really on any side of the house they want. They make, yes.
So, if I register or pre-register, and you're coming to town, and you'll bring that service right to my house?
Sure.
So, let's say, uh, my neighbor got it, he pre-registered, I did not, but like a year later, I want it. Do I have that option?
Yes, uh, that's kind.
Do you bring it to the house, or do I have to hire a separate contractor to bring it?
No, we'll, we'll bring it to the house. We've, uh, we just built Coal Valley, Illinois, and we basically went in front of 805 homes, 50 homes didn't want it. Uh, we have about what, 20 of them that, about 20 of them that's called us back that wanted a drop, so. You know, it, it takes these, you know, the homeowner a little while to figure out what they want, and when they want it, they know what they want.
Gotcha.
You know, it's, it's fiber optic internet, and I don't know if everybody understands that when we're in the neighborhoods going through, that, you know, the fire, you know, K's very good at communicating that, but, you know, they gotta actu, actually read it, so. Um, we run into those situations where they either don't understand what fiber optics are, or they just throw it in the garbage, and when we're, you know, running by the house, they're like, what's this, you know, and, you know? Our contractors are very good at, at explaining what they're doing, so.
Or they might just have their neighbors say, man, this is great, you know?
Yeah, and that's so. Yeah, and that's a, that's a lot of, a lot of what happens. Um, so we run into that periodically and we will, we'll have, uh, we'll have one of our, our engineer, he's going to be our project manager, he'll be, uh, onsite here in La Salle, uh, kind of going back and forth to La Salle and Peru, uh, um, keeping the, the build on task. So, um, you know, I, I did mention we, our drop conduit normally at a depth of twelve to twenty-four inches. Um, we don't go any less than twelve, uh, just because, you know, a lot of people plant flowers and they go down six inches or whatever and, you know, they'll cut the fiber. But, uh, um, but we prefer twenty-four, but a lot of times we can't get twenty-four, we'll have to go to twelve. Uh, step six, uh, you know, once the conduit's in, fiber's house, dro- or fiber, fiber's blown in the conduit, drops to the house, we, it is ready to, to, uh, install the service. So, when the drop is complete, uh, our contractors will do the splice and readings at the home. Once we know back in our office that there is splice and readings at the home, meaning that the fiber's live and ready to go, that homeowner will call our front office and basically schedule for an install date. Once technician gets out to the house, they'll look at the side of the house, see if anything else needs to be done at the side of the house. Uh, they'll go, they'll drill a hole into the house, put the fiber into the, uh, the eight oh three modem and configure their router and they have internet service. So, it's... Any questions about the construction?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't have a, I, I, I don't know how to turn the computer on, all right? So, if you're running that, like you're saying, it's, it's easier to get it if you're in the area. So, can I get it run to my house without hooking up? Because I'm going to be selling my house, you know, one of these days and it'll, it'll be there. You know what I'm saying? So, the person that buys my house has it there.
Yeah, you just need to register. There's no obligation for anybody to sign up for our service. If you register, of course, we want you to sign up, but as long as you're in our registration database and, um, that allows our contractors a list of houses that we are going to put a drop to. Um, so regardless of your circumstance, if you register on our, our site, then yes, we'll, we'll put a drop to your house.
And if they don't sign up for service?
Sure.
Good.
Does your company provide, uh, wireless routers and modems? Is that part of the deal or?
We don't normally, we do have them available. We, uh, have a Comtran sixty-eight fi- or, yeah, Con, I think it's sixty-eight fifty, uh, that we have. It's a mid-grade router. Um, those are available to purchase. You know, we, we normally use those for our ACAM obligations. I tend to tell our techs to push somebody to like an Asus or something that's a little bit more.
So, like, the typical household right now, you, do you think they would have a compatible wireless router in their house or would they have? Yeah?
Nine out of ten do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, nine out of ten will sell the router, they go to Walmart.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't sell a lot of, a lot of routers. Um, so, yeah.
What's the, what's the, uh, price for your service compared to normal high?
Kay, Kay will get into that, yeah.
Earlier you said you were going to partner with the city. Does that mean you're signing a franchise agreement? Why would we want to partner with you?
Think, is that part of your?
We're, yeah, we're gonna.
Yeah. He'll wrap that up, yeah.
We're pretty connected.
Yeah, right.
We, we have a lot of questions.
Sure, sure.
I'd like to question on the construction part. I recall maybe like ten, twelve years ago when, the other guy came down here putting in fiber optic cable, they're around a grand or something. So, there's fiber optic here. Is that, so that part right there, who owns that? Who ran the line that feeds our schools?
There's a company called ifiber.org. Go to ifiber.org if you want to see who.
Okay.
It was a forty-two million dollar government grant.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it's, so fiber optics run through here. Are you guys tapping into that?
We're not.
You're, you're running your own line?
We have our own line. Runs down the railroad from Chicago to Omaha.
Okay. So, then how, like, uh, because I'm looking at like, some cities seem to have their own fiber optic? How is that possible?
Well, Peru's a good example. They built some fiber.
They did?
Yes. They own some fiber that we are IRU-ing. We, we are going to take an irrevutable right of use. We're basically leasing their fiber as part of their build. So, they built some fiber. I'm not sure they've monetized it the way they want to do, but that's, you know, I don't, I don't know all the details of that.
Okay, all right.
One more question for the construction side. So, now that you brought up iFiber, kind of reminded me of this. When we call in a locate here in town, it takes iFiber a long time to get here because they're from, I think they're down south somewhere if I, if I'm not mistaken. Do you have a utility, either contractor or in-house personnel that does your locates? And how many of them is there statewide that can be easily accessible? You have two-hour window, but a lot of times iFiber can't get here within the two hours.
Yeah, we have.
For emergency situation because we have water main breaks all the time.
Yeah. We have, uh, our technicians are always on call. Uh, we have an on-call schedule. They all know how to locate. We have three in-house locators, uh, right now that are assigned to, uh, Henry County, Rock Island County, and parts of Mercer County. Um, we would probably, um, more than likely hire another locator uh, because one of our locators, I think, lives pretty darn close to Princeton. So, it'd be perfect to, uh, dispatch him from that area out towards La Salle and Peru.
Unless he's already in Davenport.
Well, we would assign him this area. You know, we have a locator assigned to Davenport, we have a locator assigned to, uh, and they do a good job. I mean, they, they go through a bunch of tickets every day, uh, clear them out. Um, so we don't really have a problem locating our facilities. But, yeah, I mean, to answer your question, we would probably hire another locator.
Thank you.
All right, I'll let Kate Kroger tell you what the benefits of this network is.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate the time, guys. I'm not going to take a bunch of time. I just wanted to share with you some of the benefits of fiber, which a lot of you are, are, are already know some of the benefits. But, um, fiber to the, uh, prem is better, but why is it better and what does that mean for La Salle? So, one of the, the things that our service will deliver is we'll offer a ten gigabit of service. Um, so every resident and every business pass by our network would had, have access to, um, the ten gigabit symmetrical service. Um, I think what's important to note also is it's a dedicated service, so you get the speed that you pay for. So, our fiber-to-the-prem internet is not an up-to-service. It's whatever speed you sign up for is the speed that you actually would receive. Our gig service is ten to twenty times speedier than a fifty to one hundred meg cable modem, which cable's probably pretty prominent in this area. One of the really other important things is you've heard the term throttling. So, we do not throttle our, uh, service. We do not, you do not share it and we do not, um, charge you for, we don't cap our data. So, those are really, really important, especially if you're cable users. Because unlike, um, and I know I'm picking on the cable folks, but, um, as I said, the cable is delivered over a shared connection, so the more users you have on, the more bandwidth that's demanded, right? So, you might notice sometimes when you get home at night, when the kids get off school or, or even at work, you may notice a slowdown in your speed and that's when they're throttling the data. So, they're basically taking it and throttling it down to ration that service to all the people they're jumping on, right? So, that's just a difference that you wouldn't experience with Geneseal Communications fiber because again, it's a dr- dedicated direct service. I think another important one is the no-data caps. We have people walk into our office in Geneseal all the time, um, that is just, all of a sudden got this crazy, uh, bill that they've gotten because they've gone over their data cap. So, I think that's important to note too, that we do not cap our data. So, you don't, you're not going to get that crazy overage bill in the mail like some people probably have experienced. I think it's also important to note that no longer do we just have that one little household computer, right? Um, we now have multiple devices that are all demanding that service. Laptops, PCs, smartphones, uh, smart home locks, thermostats, cameras. All of us have mu- many, many devices that are trying to grab that bandwidth. Just a, just an interesting fact, a, a study that's recently done, actually, this is even a couple of years old. They have on average, the average home in the U.S. has twenty-two connected devices now inside your house. So, it's just, we all know, it's just getting crazy how many things that they're coming out with that we connect to that internet. I think another really important thing that I wanted to point out is, is the economic opportunity that this brings for La Salle. Um, I think fiber to the prem, as I mentioned, provides that ten gigabit of symmetrical speed and that's really positions La Salle to attract, um, some new business. It also allows your residents who could, to work from home more easily because they've now got that better service and resulting in, in more economic growth and job creation for the community of La Salle. Another really big thing with fiber is the money that it can save. Sure you've heard, cutting the cord, right? Everybody talks about, let's cut the cord and save money. On average, a cord cutter saves about ninety-two dollars a month. That's eleven hundred dollars a year. That's another study. Geneseal Communications does not get in the cable business. We don't get in the TV business, but we really push our customers to stream. You can stream whatever you want over our fiber, right? We offer a tool that is a, you guys can go use it if you want. It's, you go to stream@fibermefast.com and it's a free tool that you just go in and you say, hey, I want my locals. I want to watch, you know, I need Big Ten Network. I need whatever. This will actually, it's an algorithm will come back and it'll tell you what streaming is the best option for you. Personally, I have YouTube TV at home. Um, some people have Philo. It, it just is an algorithm that says this is what you need versus what you need. So, um, that's a tool that we offer to our customers to help them with their cutting that cord off of that pay cable.
Is there enough charge in for like that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They'll say, I want the Big Ten Network. Is there a charge then for that?
Uh, it depends. Um, which, so for instance, my husband cannot live without the Big Ten Network. He likes golf. We have to have the golf channel. So, this, this stream that I'm telling you about, so go use it, go home. It, it, we don't keep anybody that doesn't have our service, they're invited to use it too. And again, it's stream@fibermefast.com. You say, I got to have my local channels. I've got to have ESPN. I've got to have Fox News, whatever you're looking for.
And that's all part of your package?
It, it's not really part of our package. It's a tool that we let our customers and non-customers use to go determine what's the best streaming option for me.
Every app that you download to stream costs money, kind of like Netflix and Macs.
Right, right.
Okay.
But YouTube TV, you can have up to three different users on YouTube. So, my son in Des Moines, um, he pirates off of me. I, he doesn't ever send me a check for it, but he definitely is using my YouTube TV subscription. So, even though I'm paying sixty-some dollars a month for YouTube TV, I can kind of justify it. Not really because he's not paying me for it, but he's using that. So, you can share a lot of your streaming options that you have, unlike when you pay for a straight cable. So, anyway, we stay out of the TV business, but we do encourage because that's important to people's streams. So, we offer that tool. And, and also it's an increased home value. Um, interesting, um, another broadband association study said that fiber to the prem increases your home value on an average of five percent. That's, that's a fifteen thousand dollars on a three hundred, uh, thousand dollar home. That's, that's huge. So, when you're talking about going to sell your house, um, that, that makes your market price better when you have fiber. Um, people are looking for fiber. I was talking to realtors, realtors in our area and she says, I get asked every single day. She says, does it have fiber? So, that's gotten really important. You guys probably already know that, but it's, it's an important thing. Next slide. Oh, there you go. Thank you. So, somebody asked about price. Um, so our, our, I, I feel our pricing is very competitive. I think you asked about a modem. Um, we do supply a modem. We don't, we don't get into the wireless router business as Shane talked about because so many people buy their own routers, but we do supply the modem. Um, the modem is included. If you have a two-year agreement with us, that's normally a ten-dollar savings a month. People that aren't in agreement with us, um, that go month to month, pay an extra ten dollars for that modem fee. You can see the package prices across the screen in front of you. I won't get into detail on them. We offer promotional rates. There's a one-year, a two-year promotional rate. Um, and then, um, it goes into the full price rate on those. As long as you stay within that agreement with us, um, you get that modem free. So, that's ten dollars off that bill each month. Um, I wanted to mention real quickly that I think one of the things that really sets Geneseal Communications apart is, is we're, we're small and we're local. We're not the AT&amp;Ts of the world, right? So, we have a local customer service team. You walk in the door, you call them, you talk to live people. So, our customer sp- service specialists are our primary point of contact for residential customers. They introduce and explain service offerings, including the broadband, our local phone and long-distance service. They register new customers for service and schedule appointments. They provide the tier-one support and reprogram modems. They escalate trouble tickets to help reduce our truck rolls. They promote our services based upon our technology needs and prior purchases and location. And their interaction, again, is in person or over the phone, through social media, via email and online chat. I think this is really important and I, and I really want to kind of emphasize this. To maintain that same service quality in the Peru and La Salle area, it is our plan to open a local storefront. We see the importance of that. Um, they need that local presence. They want to walk in the door. They want to talk to somebody. They want to sw- you know, whatever, switch out a modem. They want to roll trucks. So, that's something that we're really focused on doing to offer that same service quality. Communication with La Salle residents and businesses was, it include a combination of efforts, marketing collateral, advertising products, promotional offers, direct mail, target, mass, digital, um, channels. But one of the things I wanted to point out that we have is we do have a twenty-four-by-seven online registration site via our, um, Fiber Me Fast, which includes service address veri- verification intelligence. And what that just simply means is you can go put your address in, it will tell you whether fiber is available at your location or not. As Shane mentioned, you can register. It doesn't, it doesn't qualify, you know, we don't hold your feet to the fire on it. You can register. You're not obligated to take our service. It just lets you know you're, that you're interested in that service. So, that's, that's a really important tool because a lot of people like to get on it, you know, whatever hours in the, in the day and night and be able to register. So, that's an important piece that we have. That kind of ends my dog and pony show. Does anybody have any questions from the marketing, um, side of things?
So, about a month ago, we had someone similar to, uh, your company.
Mm-hmm.
I guess it'd be a competitor of yours. Um, said almost everything same as you did. So, I mean, we, we're pretty familiar now with fiber.
Okay.
What is the benefit with going with your company versus one of your competitors?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, you sure can. I'll hand that right over to him.
That's a marketing question.
All right. Well, thank you again for your time.
One other question, like you, you gave residential rates. Do you have business rates?
Business rates, no. We have a direct salesperson that actually works with businesses. Um, and he comes in and sits down and, and talks to different businesses about what their needs are and then builds those quotes for them. So, um, like I said, we have a couple of salesmen that will do that side of it. So.
I have one quick question about pricing as well. So, the prices are very attractive. So, say you go with the sixty-five, the, the, the one on the right there, sixty-five dollars a month. Is it like, is, are you going to see a sixty-five dollar bill or are you going to see forty, fifty dollars worth of fees tapped on top of that and end up with a hundred dollar bill?
Right. Well, you read that fine print on there. There is a nine ninety-five, um, technology fee and we're right up front with that.
Okay.
Uh, that gets added on to that. That's a promotional price. So, I think you're talking about the gig.
Yeah.
So, you can read on there that sixty-five dollars, if you're in a two-year agreement, you get that for one year. And then in year two, your price is going to go to eighty-five. And then after eight, after year two, then it goes to the standard rate, which is a hundred dollars a month and that's a gig. Um, and then that nine ninety-five technology fee's on top of that. As long as you stay within that two-year agreement, your modem is free. So, that saves you that ten dollars. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And we usually notify people before that ten dollars gets, so you have the option to renew your agreement, so.
That, that slide, is that on your webpage?
Yes, sir.
Where, where, I'm, I'm just hoping.
Uh, fire, you, which, which website are you going to?
Fiber Me Fast?
Mm-hmm. There should definitely be the pri- well, let, it, it is.
Fiber, coverage maps, construction process, stream, surveys, no pricing.
The pricing is when you go to register. So, let me just elaborate just a moment on that before I turn, give it back to Mike. Um, different offers in different areas, not, not same pricing. But when you go to register, you may be in a market that we offer refer a friend or we may have a different promotional. So, it's based on your address. So, when you go put a house number in your zip code, the offer page comes up in that. Nope, because we don't have fiber to your house yet.
That's what I'm getting. How, how, how can I read that small print on my website, on your website? I have to pick an address? Do I live in Geneseal or something or?
Um, that, no, you can get to that, um, different directions. Um.
Hey, can she call you tomorrow?
Sure.
Get your information and.
Sure.
You bet.
We'll give you a shout.
Okay.
All right. We've been, we've been at this a while. I know you got other business to take care of, so I'm going to, I'm going to be quick here. Flip one more slide. We, we like to partner with the cities that we build in. Um, we're going to, you, you know. We're gonna, you, you know your residents, they don't know who we are coming in the door, we communicate with them, and we ask you to communicate with them. So somebody's digging up there right away, they don't come out there and try to run us off if it happens. If you look at the Fiber Me Fast gigabit communities, those are the communities we've built, fiber to the home, fiber to the premise networks. And to answer your question, Jordan, if you flip to the next slide, why us? You got other choices, why us? First, we bury our network. And I can't tell you how important that is, I think it's undervalued, it's very expensive for us to do that, but when the derecho winds come, we're still up. Our service isn't affected. You're not going to have more wires and poles all over your right-of-way. It's aesthetically pleasing, all you're going to see is that handhold that Shane showed you a little while ago. We partner with the city, we're going to collect and remit to you 5% of the revenue we make in this business, because we're basically helping, paying you to help us with permitting and with communication with these customers.
By you, you mean the city of LaSalle?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll pay the city of LaSalle 5%.
Any usage that we have, we're 5% discount.
What now?
So.
No, he's suggesting that any resident.
All off every resident.
We, we collect $10,000 a month, you're going to get, what is that, $500, so we're going to get 5% of that. We're gonna, we're gonna charge effectively a franchise fee, but we're going to call it a right-of-way fee. The service we're providing is not regulated by cities or states. We're, we don't have to offer this, but we're putting it on the table right up front. We bill a customer 100 bucks, we're going to bill them an extra $5 that's going to say, LaSalle right-of-way fee. And we're going to collect those $5, and once a quarter, remit them to the city.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
Okay. We're, Kay already said it, we're going to put a, we're going to put up a local storefront. Most of our competitors kind of blow through and they're located in some other state. And lastly, we're going to have a project manager, and these guys, Kevin, Brian will have his phone number, he'll have Shane's phone number, he'll have my phone number. You're not calling, you're not, have some salesman from out of state that you're calling that can't make a decision. If I need to be here, I can be here in an hour from Genesee. So you're, you're dealing with the top-level guys in our company. So we think high-speed internet is just as important as water and electricity now, and we think this is a great opportunity for you and a great opportunity for us to partner with you. Our fiber to the premise is unlimited, it's dedicated, symmetrical, and it's fast as lightning. So once every, once we complete this, every resident passed by our network will have 10 gig up to, you'll have access to a 10-gig symmetrical connection. Questions for me?
And that one connection that you make, you can upgrade it.
Yes.
It's just.
You can start at a lower price, and 10 years from now, AI, something, you've got to have 5-gig or 10-gig speed, you can upgrade it.
And you can register your home and not even sign up, and no cost just for registering.
Correct.
Are you requiring contracts with the resident?
Kay, what Kay told you is, with a contract, you save $10 a month.
Right.
But no, we do not require a contract.
I agree with her on that agreement.
How about outages, you guys, like, do you guys service Genesee?
Say it one more time.
The city of Genesee.
Oh, yeah.
So let's say last year, how many outages did they have?
Shane, do you have feel for that? Very few on, I mean, fiber is very reliable, especially buried fiber.
I think it would be fair to say those outages were due to someone that didn't locate properly and dug up more fiber.
Then how long was that down when they cut the fiber?
Our guys worked all night on the one, so.
You know, we had, we had a, there was a contractor up by Morris that went underneath the railroad without permit, and he cut R216 and Verizon, MediaCom.
Yeah, we felt that, everything.
Everybody.
Big cut.
Was over in the Quad Cities, so it put, you know, 911 down and all sorts.
One more quick point, this is a 1,200 pair of copper, this is what AT&amp;T has, okay? This is what runs DSL. This is a 192-count fiber cable, it has 16 tubes of 12 fibers each. One fiber, not one tube, one fiber, has exponentially more bandwidth than that copper cable. This is what we do, when we put it in the ground, and it's reliable, it's resilient, you'll like it if you get it. We'd like to partner with you. So, thank you, yeah.
Question, I have a couple of questions I have for you. I apologize if I missed it, but what is the, if you built LaSalle, what do you think the total investment would be here?
Well, that's proprietary, I mean, it's, you know, we're, we're building this at our expense, so.
In, in similar towns, how many households are in Genesee?
How many what?
How many households are in Genesee?
Um, you know, households, there's, there's 6,000 residents, 5,000, 5,500.
Okay, how, of that, do you know how many households do you guys service?
I don't have it in front of me, but the, probably 80%, 70, 80%.
70, 80%, so have you guys done any type of projections on LaSalle that would be for you?
We are, we are working on that, I mean, part of it is seeing how amicable the city is.
So you would expect that in order for it to work out here, you know, 70, 80% of households sign up for your service?
Not necessarily. We run a model that we, we would hope to get 50 to 60% over a seven-year window.
50 to 60%, and of that 50 to 60%, what is the average monthly spend for a residential household?
It, it's between a 65 and a $75, what we call ARPU, average revenue per user.
He's calculating, I'll text.
So 4,000, if we just did some simple math, there's 4,000 households here, so you've got 60%, you have about 2,400 households signed up, and if each one of them was at a $75 rating, you'd have about 100,000 dollars.
Okay.
And, and our monthly, add a 5%, I guess, fee to the city for, for the use of right-of-way would come up to about $9,000, is that, is that sound about right?
If that's the math, yes. Nine times 12 would be 100 grand a year.
John, what's our utility from Comcast?
The, the franchise fee for Comcast generates about $100,000 a year here.
But, but Jeff, you don't get a penny on internet.
No, no, I understand, you're right.
You don't get a single penny.
John already told me that.
So you're, this is, this is found money.
Right, this would be an addition to that, too.
And I'm just kind of comparing this to, you know, what, I gotta look at Peru's agreement, you know, in terms of what the agreement was with down, if it's not set at 5%, I'm understanding it correctly.
What's, what's not set at 5%?
With the, the agreement that you guys worked out with the city of Peru?
I mean, it is at 5%, I'm not sure.
So that's at 5%, but then are you also leasing some?
Yeah, they have fiber, that's what we talked about earlier, they have some, you don't have fiber that we can lease.
So you're leasing that for, like, there was a price per mile or something?
Right.
Which was anticipated at generating about an additional $17 or $18 a year for that.
Right, but you, I mean, that's apples and oranges, you don't have fiber that, we would, we would love for you to have that same fiber that we can lease, save us a lot of money.
I'm just comparing, you know, in terms of like, financial reasons, contract agreements, what you're operating.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you vary your line somewhere between 12 and 24 inches, and it goes along the railroad tracks, correct?
No, 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 the, the main line going down the right-of-way, we like to be at 36 inches. The line, what we call a drop, coming off of that to your house, into your yard, we like to be, we like to be 24 inches, but we will not do it less than 12.
The reason I ask is, I know a few years ago, up in one of the suburbs, there was an issue with fiber optics, somehow, I don't know if it was Amarin that hit it, or some, somebody else had hit the line, and it shut down the railroads for like, three days, because it took so long to find it and fix it. So I'm just curious, have you had any problems like that?
Well, we just talked about one, it was in Moline, or where was that, Shane?
Basically, she was in Morris, Illinois.
Oh, yeah.
We have a running line facility in Morris, when he comes down to Peru and Sheffield. Contractor went underneath the railroad and hit every fiber optic cable, you know, they didn't have a permit, they weren't allowed to be there.
They didn't ask for locates.
He had no permit, didn't know to duly locate, and you will have both permits and a duly locate.
Yes, sir. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys, safe travels tonight.
My, my email's on here, Shane, Kay's is, you need, you have a question, hit us with it, appreciate it.
Thank you, I know you've been working with Kurt, and we appreciate you guys coming and presenting tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Thank you, safe drive home.
Discussion, potential action on the following petitions.
Okay, request from Amarin Illinois to break ground at 546 Chief Court Street to retire gas service, 822 Eighth Street to retire gas service, 627 Lahard Street to retire gas service, 601 Todd Street to retire gas service, and 756 Proset Street to retire gas service.
I move we grant through class from Amarin to retire gas service at all five of them locations.
Second.
Motion, Malman, Crane, Sam Malman, Levery, all in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. Let's do the next street together, please, Amy.
Yes, request for 2024 raffle license from Peru Education Foundation, for 2024 raffle license from Knights of Columbus 792, and 2024 raffle license from Trinity Catholic Academy.
Your Honor, I move we grant the request for the 2024 raffle licenses.
Second.
Motion, Malman, Jeff, Simpson, Malman, Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. Reports to city officers.
Building inspector's report for January 2024 showing total fees collected of $9,650.75 with total value of construction of $15,359,596.
Your Honor, I move we accept the building inspector's report as read.
Second.
Motion, Malman, Bass, Sorcer, Malman, Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carried.
Monthly police income report for January 2024 showing total fees collected of $6,433.67.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the police income report for January 2024 showing a total collected of $6,433.67.
Motion, Malman, Reynolds, Sam Malman, Levery, all in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. No communications tonight, no bids tonight, appointments, resignations, nothing tonight? Standing committees.
Discussion and potential action regarding the recommendation of the Finance Committee regarding the purchase of office for a term for City Hall and the Police Department-related matters.
Your Honor, the Finance Committee went ahead and approved the two bids, the City Hall bid, and both are from Hendrickson Furniture Peoria. The city of LaSalle building is $25,247.75. The police department is $5,686.48. This not being appropriated, it needs a super majority, and the Finance Committee will be down in a second.
Second.
Got a motion, Malman, Patac, Malman, Levery, to accept the recognition of the Finance Committee, please take the roll.
Alderman, Baccador.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Special committees. Old business.
Authorization of pay request number 16 for viscerine construction totaling $6,633 for work completed to date on the aerobic digester conversion project and related matters.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the pay request 16 to viscerine construction as read, each alderman has a copy. Second.
Motion, Malman, Reynolds, Sam Malman, Levery, take the roll, please.
Alderman, Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Aye.
Authorization of pay request number 11 for viscerine construction totaling $361,885.36 for work completed to date on the water treatment plant improvement project and related matters.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the pay request number 11 for viscerine construction as read, each alderman has a copy. Second.
Motion, Malman, Reynolds, Sam Malman, Jepson, take the roll, I'm sorry, yeah, take the roll, please.
Alderman, Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Any other old business tonight? New business, I have something I'd like to start off with, maybe Alderman, Jepson can, can jump on board on this, our LaSalle Lincoln Lakes, eighth-grade vessel team capping off their, I guess, junior high career. If you remember, we had them in here last year for their undefeated season, recognized them for their great achievement. This year, I think they won their first game of the regional, Joe, and then?
Yeah, we lost the regional championship. Ended up after three years, we had five losses in a total of three years, so.
Outstanding.
It's a lot to be proud of.
So very nice to have them, they did a nice job representing LaSalle as they went around TCH and other schools this year. Number two, Alderman, chairperson, pastor of the Streets of Traffic, St. Hyacinth's reached out to me, at the church, and asked if they could get an additional handicap spot on Tonti Street, just right by the one they have already, on the north side towards 11th, if you can send that to the Streets of Traffic.
You'll want it on Tonti Street.
Please, yeah, they said right next to the one they have would be great.
All right, did you hear that, Brett?
Yep, I'll send it, it'll sound public.
It's on streets and alleys two weeks from tonight.
That's where they're, uh.
They're following the Finance Committee.